I was told how effective they were, I was just assuming it was working. Apologies for that, so we'll start again. Welcome everyone to this meeting of the Business and Housing Policy Committee on Tuesday, the 28th of February 2023 in the Walton Suite of the Winchester Guildhall. The time is still 6:30. My name is councillor Bronk and I'm chairperson of the committee. Before we commence, there's some housekeeping announcements as follows. This meeting is being livestreamed and will be available on the council's YouTube channel. Subtitles are available and advice on how to turn this on are set out on our website. If you're joining us online, please do turn your camera and microphone off until and then immediately after your item. Please would everyone ensure that their mobile phones are on silent and in the unlikely event that it becomes necessary to evacuate the building, the fire alarm will sound. Please follow all of the instructions given to you by our team. I'd also like to welcome members of the public to the meeting this evening and I'll invite you to come forward when it is time for you to make your contribution. And so turning to the agenda, item one, our apologies and reference to deputy members. We've received the apologies of councillor Miller and his deputy is joining us this evening, councillor Brooke. At the moment, I think we may well be waiting for councillor Isaacs and we'll deal with declarations of interest on her behalf when she joins us. In the meantime, item two, oh sorry, councillor Horley, welcome you as a full member to the committee and now standing in or replacing councillor Scott. Our declarations of interest, members, any declarations to advisers? Thank you. I'll turn to my announcements. I've received briefings from Andrew Gosstallow and Jenny Knight, so the tourism strategy I'd like to update you on. As was in the work programme outlined at the last Business and Housing Policy Committee, development of the evidence base encompassing data and intelligence is progressing as planned. This information will inform the stakeholder engagement activity scheduled over the spring and summer period, when the strategy will be developed in collaboration with operators in the visitor economy across the district. Discussions are taking place with the University of Winchester in respect of their master and PhD students supporting development of the strategy and monitoring its delivery. Update on the UK Shared Prosperity Fund is that the council eventually received its grant determination confirmation of its 1 million UK shared prosperity fund allocation on the 6th of December last year. Projects planned for the first year of the programme, ending next month on the 31st of March, have been commenced, including delivery of the recent Enchanted Light Garden, which was well received as illustrated in social media. Hopefully you'll identify it this evening on your way in. Projects delivered by both officers and external partners for 2023/24 are being finalised. And finally, please note that the UK Shared Prosperity Fund allocation to the council provides the majority of funding for projects which will take place in 2024/25. And then finally, the council silhouette the decision on its £749,000 allocation from the Rural England Prosperity Fund, against which projects and spend are due to commence on the 1st of April 2023 and run through until 31st of March 2025. The update on some of the housing papers that we've looked at is that at the last Business and Housing Policy Committee meeting, Mrs Thorburn outlined the scoping of the housing strategy preparation work. Officers listened to the committee member feedback that the housing strategy as an important document should not be rushed, to ensure that it continues to deliver on the council plan priorities and aligns with the local plan. Since that report, further work has taken place to help shape the refreshed housing strategy, which includes a housing market context report for the Winchester district, providing an updated evidence base to support development of the housing strategy, a stakeholder feedback document, resident survey feedback from 406 respondents and the potential priorities emerging document. So officers are currently preparing their draft housing strategy, which will then bring back to this committee for review and discussion and hold on all members briefing before taking the paper to the housing cabinet committee for final approval. Timelines have yet to be agreed with both chairs. An update on the disabled facilities grant is that the paper took into account our feedback at the last meeting and the revised report will go to the housing cabinet committee on the 21st of March as part of the private sector housing strategy paper. Finally, officers have been asked to comment on the impact on officer time and existing projects if a task and finish group was to be established early in the next municipal year to review the impact of HNOs, houses in multiple occupation, and also to assess and report upon the consequences of a policy change to support the installation of showers instead of baths. The feedback was not possible for today, but we can list these items of work on the work plan as matters for consideration in the work plan for next year. Now able to move to item four, to approve minutes of the previous meeting held on the 29th of November 2022. Can these be agreed, please? Agreed? Thank you. Item five, public participation. Welcome to members of TACT and Ian Tate. I understand you're all happy to wait until item seven on the agenda as we progress first to the Winchester district cultural strategy scoping document. Is that correct? Are you happy with that? Yes, thank you very much. Right then, we're now able to move on to item six of the agenda, which is the Winchester district cultural strategy scoping document. Councillor Thompson to introduce the report for us.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm really pleased to be presenting this paper tonight. The need for developing a new cultural strategy was one of the actions identified within the Green Economic Development Strategy, which came to this committee last year when we agreed its two-year action plan. Of course, culture means very different things to different people and understanding that difference across the wide range of communities and groups within our district is really important. We are so lucky to live in a district which has an abundance of natural environmental assets, as well as a unique cultural and historic heritage. And we already have a great cultural offer. It is this that makes living here so special and what drives our visitor economy. So it's really important that going forward, we understand what we have within our district and where the gaps are, and that we build on and develop our cultural offering in a way that is inclusive for all and recognises the value that culture brings to all our lives. Of course, we cannot do this on our own, which is why we've set up a stakeholder group to engage with and almost co-write our strategy. And I'm very grateful tonight for Simon from Arts Council England for coming along to this meeting and taking part. This is important because this won't be a strategy just designed for the city council to implement, but we want it to become a strategy for all those groups and we'll be expecting our wider community to certainly buy into it. So I could say a lot more, but I'm going to stop there. What we are asking the committee to do tonight is obviously a comment on the scoping paper that we've got before you. Also, obviously, look at the presentation which we're about to give, fronted up by Andrew Gosstallow and Emlyn Hickman. And so give us good feedback so we can make sure that we are on the right track and we can get on with actually producing the final strategy. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Thompson. So as councillor Johnson says, we have Simon Jutton on MS Teams today as representative from the Arts Council England and we have made an agreement with Arts Council England that they will be partnering with us through the development of this strategy, which is a great benefit to us in terms of actually creating some of the priorities and principles around the strategy. So Simon's going to spend a few minutes just giving us some national context about Arts Council England and then we'll hand over to Emlyn Hickman, who joined us in September last year as our lead for culture and the creative sector. And then between herself and myself, we'll give you some evidence-based information, which is obviously key, developing the strategy going forward, as councillor Thompson said, collaboratively with operators across the cultural sector. So Simon, over to you for a few minutes of national context, if you please.
Okay, can you hear me okay? Is that all right? Great. Hello, I'm sorry I can't be there tonight, I've got other commitments over here in Bristol. So I'm Simon Jutton, I work for Arts Council England. For those that don't know, we are the National Development Agency for culture, which covers all of the different art forms, a lot of aspects of heritage, particularly museums and library development as well. We're really pleased to be able to work with you on this strategy, on developing this strategy and I hope it is an opportunity that you take up. My particular role is as the lead for Hampshire and I am pleased to say that I think almost every district now in Hampshire has a cultural strategy or is about to publish one. And indeed, I know the county are also looking at developing a cultural strategy as well. Our strategy, the Arts Council strategy, we have a 10-year strategy which is called Let's Create and essentially it has three outcomes. The first of those outcomes is called Creative People. So basically, this is that we want to see, make sure that everybody in the country, whoever they are, has the opportunity to be creative or take part in creative activities. So that might be, it might be, it might be reading, it might be singing in a choir, it could be going to the theatre, going to an art exhibition, it could be being an artist. But we want everyone to have that opportunity to fulfil their lives really through culture and creative activity. In order to do that, we need to achieve the second of our outcomes, which is cultural communities. Cultural communities really refers to the fact that obviously if people are to take part in activity and it's good quality activity, you need the theatres, the galleries, the museums, you need the arts groups. museums, you need the arts groups, the choirs, the libraries, et cetera. So you need that infrastructure so that people have got those opportunities. And that is something which doesn't happen because we want it to happen invariably anywhere where we're working. This happens where we work closely with partners to make sure that those opportunities are there, and probably the most important partner is the local authority in most cases. So this is why we're really pleased that you are looking at developing a strategy. And the third outcome is that we hope that if we achieve this, we will achieve our vision of a creative and cultural country that is flourishing, that is giving people happy, fulfilled lives, but also helping to create jobs and to help sell our really important creative industries around the world. I think it's really important to say that in developing a cultural strategy, our advice always is not to create it in isolation. A cultural strategy should be about, first and foremost, should really be about what are the priorities for a particular place. So in a particular place, a lot of people will say, we're trying to establish more healthier communities, more social cohesion, better employment opportunities, better education. And that a cultural strategy isn't instead of these things, but rather it's how the culture and creative activity can play its part in achieving those things. So it's really important that it is a place-based strategy. Increasingly, certainly, we see across Hampshire, but across the country at the moment, cultural strategies are really helping to shape particularly plans around regeneration, looking at high streets and town centres. So just recently, you may be aware, in Rushmore, the work that had been done around a cultural strategy, I think, helped to lever in some levelling up funding, which in large part is about developing a new cultural centre in the centre of Farnborough. It's just an example. But having a cultural strategy provides a framework for yourselves and actually for us as well, to know that anything that we're supporting or doing is supporting the priorities of that place. So that's the sort of grand plan. In several places, once a strategy is in place, a cultural compact is formed, and this is generally where you've got different partners, including the local authority and ourselves, but normally the higher education sector, industry, et cetera, that oversee that strategy, and that's something which we can advise on. We, because of the nature of our work and our resources, we can't work equally across the country, so our funding schemes are open to everywhere in the country. But our particular focus is on those places which have low levels of cultural engagement at the moment. I'm happy to say, I suppose, that Winchester district isn't one of those, we've got relatively high levels of cultural engagement. But we do see Winchester as a district as a place of opportunity, and it's for the reasons that the councillor mentioned in her introduction. You have such a rich heritage, such a strong current cultural scene. This is more about how do you make that opportunity work and how do you ensure that that is accessible to everybody, is really benefiting all of the people that live, visit and work in the district. So we've been advising, providing a bit of support as best we can, and we will continue to do that, continue to come along to the sessions that Andrew and Emlyn are organising, and in time can talk about if there is the formation of a cultural compact, providing maybe a bit of financial support towards that. Does that cover everything? Is that what you were looking for?
Yes, thanks, thanks very much, Simon. So like to hand over now to Emlyn to start the journey and the story through the evidence base.
You too, one moment. Simon, you will be able to still stay on the call with us, will you, to, until after the other presentations, to be able to participate in questions, will you?
Yes, well, I've gotten to about seven o'clock, if that's okay. If there's any questions, let me know.
Thank you, that would be great. And then just before we proceed, councillor Isaac, welcome. Can I just check that you have no declarations of interest you wish to make?
Apologies for arriving slightly late for work. No, no declarations, thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that, Emily.
No worries, thank you very much. So I believe we have a presentation, and the first slide is talking about Winchester's population, and I'm sure many of you are probably far more familiar with this than others, but you've got the spread of ages across the district on this slide here. And one thing that is particularly interesting is between the 2011 and 2021 census, we had an increase of 12,260 retirees, but there was only an increase of 4,801 over 65s. So that little piece of information does suggest that people are retiring before 65. So that could be an audience that we might be able to target within our work because they are not at work, but they might have lots of time to spend doing lots of nice creative activity. Next slide, please. Also, on changes in the population between 2011 and 2021, it's quite easy, I would say, to perhaps overlook the 0.7% of the population, but actually it's quite a fast increase-changing population. For example, that one there under religion, 0.7% identify as Hindu in Winchester, but actually that's doubled in the last 10 years. So those populations are changing quite rapidly, and traditionally, some of these groups might gravitate towards one another. So another piece of research for us to do is, are there clusters that we can then take some of this work to work with in these particular communities? Next slide, please. A little note on deprivation on the national scale, it's always indices of multiple deprivation, which Winchester doesn't feature in, but actually there are, that doesn't mean that Winchester doesn't have its challenges. So they, you can see from the dark blue on the presentation there, that actually on some of the markers, quite significant proportions of Winchester do feature in those, most deprived for affordability and access for housing and about access to the grid and internet and things like that. So there are barriers that we might need to address within our strategy. Next slide, please. And then we've also got four wards that fall into the top 10%, most deprived for access to leisure facilities. So whilst 73% of adults are physically active, 48% of young people are physically active. So that's almost half of our young people are inactive.
Would you just hold fire for a second? Councillor Horro.
Sorry Chair, I'm really struggling to hear. This is my deaf side, and I don't know whether we could ask the officer to speak a little closer to the new microphones. Thank you, thank you very much.
Apologies. Yes, so 48% of young people are physically inactive, so access to those leisure facilities is potentially an issue for that. Next slide, please. So this is the Active Live Survey, which is an Arts Council England survey. What percentage of people surveyed said they had done these activities in the last 12 months? Interesting what happens in 2020, and we all know why. But what is interesting is actually the spent time doing creative artistic theatrical or music activity or craft is much less affected than the others. And I think it's important to note that most of those activities can be done from home. And so that is a big area for focus for us. And then the next slide, just a little comparison on those responses in comparison to the national Hampshire and New Forest averages, and you can see across the board, Winchester performs better than all of them, even in the pandemic state. So I think that tells us a lot about the type of people living here and what they might like to engage in. Next slide, please. So a little bit more on Winchester district audiences. The names down the left-hand side might not mean very much if you're not familiar with audience agency, but it's very similar to systems such as Acorn or Mosaic, where it splits the population by postcode and things like that. But what is really interesting, as Simon alluded to, 80% of Winchester audiences are either high or medium engaged, so they are willing and ready to participate. We just need to make sure we're offering the right things to them. Next slide, please. So there's a little bit of a map there, which maps some of those segments that I alluded to a second ago. And the biggest section there is the green section, affluent professional suburbanite, keen consumers of traditional culture. So that's probably not a surprise to most people. There are two little yellow dots right in the centre of the city, highly active, diverse, social and ambitious regular engagers, conveniently located around our two universities, which is, that segment is quite highly student-based. So very interesting in terms of what people will engage in. This data doesn't tell us where they engage in culture, it is limited on that front, but tells us they are willing to engage, which is good to know. Next slide, please. Okay, so a little bit of information on audience trends in general. Audience appetites have changed throughout the pandemic. People probably wouldn't have engaged in digital content before, but because they started to, because they had no choice, they now still want it. So online engagement is now really key, and people are being asked to provide both hybrid events where they have both in-person and digital offers. And part of the change also in some of the surveys done by Arts Council England is around broadening the scope of creativity. So they've started including things like gardening, cooking, fashion within that creativity, and that means that more people are now identifying as creative within themselves, which is really useful as well. Next slide, please. That slide's not very clear, I apologise, but it's showing that the left-hand column is the highest all the way across the board, regardless of which creative activity there is, and that is the young people, so the 16 to 24-year-olds. So they're a really key target demographic for us, and they are engaging in cultural activity, even if it's just curating their content on TikTok, they are doing the engagement. And also, the only thing they don't rank highest on is reading, but 75% of them said they read, so that's also not insignificant. Next slide, thank you. So obviously Winchester, one great win was done in 2020, and there was a culture subgroup. A lot of the sentiment from that is that, you know, the members of the district are ready and willing to collaborate, but they need a strong leadership and an action-oriented plan. So that's a really big thing for us to take through to our strategy, to make sure that that's included. And then on the next slide, we've just got some of the things that were discussed within that cultural group. Don't want to go into too much detail, but just kind of demonstrates the breadth of that discussion that was had just a few years ago. Then there are four suggested big picture projects that came out of that one great win, and in some guise or another, all four of them are ready, active, being worked on by the teams here. So that's very much feeding into what we are doing. Next slide, please. So then we did a little bit of mapping around cultural and creative organisations in Winchester using SIC codes on our database. One of them is Arts Recreation and Entertainment, so these are all the ones that you might traditionally think of as a creative or cultural business, of which there are 781 in the district. And then on the next slide, we've got an additional 589, which sit under Information and Communication, which are also creative around motion picture, video, book publishing, all those sorts of things. And then on the next slide again, we've got an additional 617 that sit under the title of professional scientific and technical activities, which includes architecture, which we know is quite significant in Winchester, which then on the next slide gives us the overall picture of the number of cultural and creative organisations in Winchester. So there are just over 11,000 active companies on Companies House, just under 2,000 of those are registered in those SIC codes that we've just listed, which gives us a 16% creative business in Winchester, which is significant. And then we've also got two rather large segments on that diagram there, which is advertising and design, and then film, television and video. So again, that just goes to show how strongly offer already is within Winchester. And then on the next slide, I just summarise my points around other factors that may or may not affect cultural and creative activity and offer. We're not strangers to the cost of living crisis and the huge inflation rates that we're currently facing, meaning people are having to make difficult decisions, and 92% of population have indicated that they expect to decrease their spend on entertainment and leisure. And then more specifically towards our businesses, energy crisis is causing venue costs to go up exponentially whilst still recovering from the pandemic, and then also having to negotiate issues around Brexit and making it more complicated and expensive to work with artists outside of the UK. I'm just going to hand over to Andrew, who's going to do a little bit more on what we've got to so far.
Thank you, Emlyn. Just two or three more slides to go. So this slide you'll be familiar with. At a previous Business Housing Policy Committee meeting, we brought the research that we'd done into the Winchester district festivals to the committee, and this is very much part of our evidence base for the development of the culture strategy. And we recognise the importance and the role of our festivals and events programme that we already have within the city and across the district, and recognising that in the last, in the last 12 years, we've moved from six to over 36 festivals and events. But what the research did show, and just to sort of clarifying, and indeed, we've heard this several times throughout the evidence space that we've been undertaking, is that the funding and financial stability is very much a challenge for festivals and events, as is the operational delivery, which is very heavily reliant on volunteers. And also, we know that the current programme attracts 12% of staying visitors, so the vast majority of visitors are residents and day visitors. And whilst that is really important from an economic perspective, and that's not the only perspective that we look at in terms of culture, but from an economic perspective, we know from our research that staying visitors generate more local spend than day visitors. So that's perhaps something potentially to look at going forward as well. And of course, there are opportunities to broaden the benefits of the events and the festivals across the district in terms of business engagement within those. Next slide, please. And then, as we also said earlier, we've been undertaking a significant review of other cultural strategies across the country. We've looked at a total of 26. This is a combination of strategies that have been recommended to us by Arts Council England, and also strategies that are from destinations comparative to Winchester district, but also those that are best practice as well, that show some innovation and some learning that we may wish to undertake. And there's very much some sort of key messages in that bar chart there, showing some common themes across those 26 strategies around partnership and skills, financial stability that I've just touched on, diversity in industry growth have been quite key. Interestingly, wellbeing is down the lower end of that. Now, that could be very much of the snapshot of strategies that we have taken. When we look at Arts Council England's Let's Create, wellbeing and health, et cetera, are two sort of very key strands of their strategy, and potentially something that we would look to replicate here in Winchester. We're also working with Dr Daniel Ashton from Winchester School of Art, who's a nationally recognised authority on cultural sector policy and principal investigators on the local government data analytics for culture and creativity, and would be working in partnership with them and the University of Winchester throughout this process, and looking at strategies further in terms of. strategies at further in terms of the evidence evidence base. Next slide please. Um. And then, as we've also alluded uh to, this strategy um in order to be achieved has to be delivered collaboratively, not only with external partners, um but with internal partners as well. Um. And so alignment with various key strategies across the authority is absolutely key. Um. The local plan being one of those. Um. And this uh slide just illustrates some of the collaborative work that we've been doing um with our um colleagues in strategic planning um to ensure that um uh the creative and the cultural sectors are recognized um within uh the local plan. Um. And indeed, um how the local plan can actually influence um an emerging cultural strategy as well. Um. And there's some examples there um of some of the areas that we've looked at. And also, most importantly, and as um councillor Thompson first indicated, our his historic environment um is very much uh recognized. And if we go to the next slide, just to put that into context in terms of the local plan, um it gives you an idea um of the amount um of historic environment that we have um around us, um that we must make sure that this uh cultural strategy um protects at all costs. Um. And the next slide please. And then finally, just a little bit um on consultation, we've mentioned several times that this strategy will be delivered um collaboratively. We've already started that process. Um. And um we um are carrying out a series of internal and external stakeholder group um works, and we've um established those and as illustrated on pages seventeen and eighteen um of uh your papers that you've received today. Next slide please. Um. And we've started that um with um stakeholder engagement with um organisations and and group meetings um through our cultural sector network. Um. And we've also established a cultural sector um stakeholder group um that also met um on the first of February. Um. And they've looked at a number of different exercises, um lovely, hate it, want it, being one of them, um and swap, something you'll be very familiar with, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats um as well. Um. And this group will continue um to work with us um throughout the development of the strategy. Next slide please. Um. And then um this slide just gives you some of the ideas of these sort of themes that were uh were coming out um of the first meeting um that were held. Um. Exeter was um commented quite uh a lot in terms of its approach um to cultural strategy. Um. Very much culture as a tool for place making was highlighted. Indeed, we've heard Simon talk about that earlier as well. And then finally, just to close off, I just a little bit about um the next steps. Um. So the paper um that you've received um outlines four key stages um that we will go through um in terms of the development of the strategy. Um. And we plan to complete the evidence-based work between now and Easter. And then through the summer period, we'll continue to work with the stakeholder group, um clarifying and and highlighting the principles and aims of the strategy, shaping the strategic direction and priorities, um continue the work with alignments of um Winchester City Council strategies, and then continue to test this with a wider consultation group um through surveys, etcetera, um with residents um as well as operators uh within the cultural creative sectors, um moving towards um a set of priorities and actions uh with a plan um to adopt the strategy um in the late summer, early autumn of uh of this year. So that ends um a sort of a fairly fast summary of the evidence that we've we've carried out. Um. And I don't know whether councillor Thompson wants to have any closing words.
Um. Thank you very much, Andrew and Emily, for um that whistle-stop tour through the evidence base that that we'll be looking at. Um. I think that was really helpful. Um. And obviously, uh members of the committee have got that slide pack within the papers. So they're there to um, you know, you can go back and look at them um in greater detail. Um. But um apart from thanking you for for your work on this, I think we'll now open it up to questions.
Can I just check, um Simon, we exceeded your seven o'clock um ideal deadline. Have you got a few more minutes for us at all?
Uh, a a couple more. I've got by seven thirty. So uh yeah, happy to answer any questions there briefly.
Yeah, I I'll ask anybody um firstly to um identify questions that should be directed to you. Uh. Is there anybody who specifically has a question uh for Simon Jutton at all, please? Maybe whilst you're thinking about it, David, our papers make reference from time to time to the inclusion of or reference to sport. And and I was wondering what your thoughts are in terms of um the scope of the strategy encompassing um sport in all of its guises, because the the sick codes refer to betting, um gambling, fitness. Um. Is that something that you would expect to uh at least be um part of the strategy, if only a a a a minor element? Or how does the Arts Council address sport when in in a cultural strategy paper?
Um. We we don't cover sport ourselves, obviously it's a separate um sports council, but quite often we find that there is crossover and some cultural strategies do include it. There's no right or wrong to that. Um. Certainly, um we work quite a lot in Hampshire with Energize Me, some people might be aware of as an active um lives organisation. And we often find that we are wanting to work in similar places, but also that barriers to cultural participation uh sometimes are the same as barriers to sporting, active life um participation. So uh not against it being involved at all. It isn't something we would directly fund uh because the way we're set up. Um. But I can see the benefits of including it, if it makes sense for you as as a place.
Thank you for that. But is anybody else uh a question that they are desperate to ask um Simon, or shall we let him prepare for his next meeting? Oh, sorry, uh councillor Isaacs.
Thank you. Um. Just a quick question in relation to my particular ward. Access to housing is quite good. Um. But where it comes to leisure.
Can you take the mic just slightly closer to you?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me now? Um. Access to housing is reasonably good in our area, but when it comes to access to sports facilities, it's in the very low sections. There's nothing that I can see on a quick glance, sort of, you know, that I can find to rectify that. Would that be something that you're looking towards within the plans for those areas that perhaps due to access or where they are geographically outside of Winchester, that you will increase the access to um those kinds of facilities within the plan?
Maybe we can come back to that one in a minute, because um unless Simon would like to correct me, I don't, I think he distanced himself from from sport um and said that our its inclusion and and thoughts were were for us. Did I misunderstand? Did you want that question to be answered by Simon?
Well, sport is scored, but leisure facilities are leisure facilities and not to be confused between the two, I think, unless I'm wrong.
No, sorry. I I was trying to make sure that you were happy and well placed to answer. Can you um uh answer councillor Isaac's question, please, about um the um embracing leisure facilities as opposed to considering sport? Is that something that you and the Arts Council would um consider or be able to comment on? Or should we look to the Sports Council?
Uh, it's it's a bit of both, really. Um. A a lot of um cultural provision across the country, as I'm sure you know too well, uh is is in leisure facilities, it's in village halls, uh it's in outdoor spaces. So we don't draw a line around something just because of of what it's called. We may well fund what goes into that. Um. We're probably less likely to to revenue fund, for example, a leisure facility that does uh a a wider range of things. We might fund some of the activities. But certainly, if you're looking at sport, I would recommend talking to Sport England, talking to Energize Me, getting that sense. But the I I referenced earlier on the development that's happening in um Farnborough, and that that in itself is a very large but um uh leisure civic and cultural complex or building. Um. So, yes, we're interested, not not against it, but we wouldn't necessarily be um funding everything that happened in it. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Great. And I will have to dash somewhere, I'm afraid.
Well, thank you very much for extending the time available to us. It's great.
No, thank you for asking me. It's been really good. Thank you.
Okay, um we can now open up the questions to um just councillor Isaacs.
Thank you, Chair. It's only a quick question. In relation to the Winchester cultural and creative organisations, uh which I think is on slide forty-two, forty-three or page ninety-four, um there's a lot of reference to Winchester. Is that Winchester as is or Winchester District? Could you just clarify the two, please?
That is Winchester District.
Could we amend that to reflect that? Would that be okay?
Yes, thanks.
Councillor Brock.
Thank you, Chair. Um. We, in the report, it says we're building on what is already well-established. Well, if we're talking about cultural and our historical heritage, I think that that's only well-established really in Winchester city centre. Um. And I think particularly as it's made reference in here to people spending less on culture and leisure, um due to the cost of living, etcetera. Um. I think it gives us a key opportunity to focus on some of the free things. So, for example, history within our district is rife. I mean, it's everywhere. And Southwark do their big D-Day event every year, and I'm not sure if that's included as festivals or if you even know about it. The same as the Overlord show that they have in Denmead every year, where they bring all the tanks in and all of the historic stuff. But simple things like around Denmead, all of the tanks were parked there before they went off to D-Day. The um the troops camped out in the woods there before they went off to D-Day. And there are no markers anywhere to tell of the history, no storyboards, things like that, that could be a real simple get people out walking, exploring the history and knowing what happened in these places, because I think another generation time, a lot of that history will be lost and gone forever. Is that something we're thinking about?
Um. If I could just come in here, um as councillor Brock will probably remember, um I and Alison Woods came down to see Denmead Parish Council um last summer, and we talked about how we might um help you um in Denmead actually have a sort of trail with posters and um um a a sort of walking trail that actually informs um residents and visitors about what happened um at in Denmead and around. And um certainly, I've also been to see Alsford, and we had a meeting um uh where with um the town trust, and we looked at the museum there. And there are all sorts of um there are all sorts of areas that certainly we could do more um on. Um. There's the Wickham Horse Fair, for instance, which may not appeal to everybody in in, you know, but it is it is part of culture. And um I think all these things do need to be embedded in our in our cultural strategy in some way. But certainly, if um um parish councils like Denmead have a particular um area that is rich in history, and goodness, around our district, we have an enormous number of um parishes and and towns that uh that have that sort of heritage, then yes, I I I I agree, we should be marking that in some way. And, you know, doing something that will actually um inform visitors so that they can go and visit. Um. I mean, my husband, for instance, went over on, you know, with a number of his friends to France and did the world um First World War trenches. And I know he'd love to do something the same. And and I keep coming across various areas that had um, you know, a a really poignant part, played a really poignant part in the Second World War. And um I I think that would be really, really fantastic, you know, to promote that sort of thing within our district.
Through you, Chair, if I may. I think it's only me banging that drum at the moment. So I just need to drum up some sport, which is why I suggested it when you came down to visit. And of course, the parish in Southwark is so involved that they do their D-Day event. But of course, I don't know what's behind these graphs. I don't know if you've noted that there's a museum at Southwark Park, for example. Um. And I don't know how much promotion a military camp would want. So it's, are we allowed to see the details that are behind some of these graphs, some of the things you've got in there to see if there's anything that's been missed?
Yeah, we're certainly very happy to to share the content. Um. I would certainly say that um this is um uh of this, the approach to the strategy will be very much agile. Um. And so this is is not exhaustive. Um. And that is very much the purpose of the collaboration and the stakeholder groups. Um. And there will be opportunities for parishes to um uh be consulted on and be informed, uh be be able to inform the development strategy to make sure that it is it is in the round and everything that is is collective, absolutely.
Councillor Radcliffe?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Um. So in terms of things that are lacking, well, first of all, can I just say thank you for the presentation and really rich, data-rich uh presentation, which is very, very interesting. Uh. Welcome the approach taken. Welcome the chance you're giving us to have uh a look at this at this early scoping stage. Uh. I was I was going to make one question really, which is really about the facilities that the uh city council uh can provide and cities and facilities that are identified as lacking uh in supporting culture and the creative industries. One that comes up again and again and came up in in the survey that you did is the lack of low-cost uh space for workshops and cultural uh activities, as well as small creative businesses that are contributing in the cultural sphere. And the other, the second, is the lack of exhibition space. Uh. And I just wanted to make sure that these findings are feeding through into other work streams that the council is working on. So, for example, with the small spaces for creative industries, we have an opportunity to address that in the context of the Central Winchester Regeneration work. And indeed, some money has already been spent trying to create uh a creative hub with low-cost units at King's Walk. So it'd be good to see what lessons we can learn from that. Uh. And then in in terms of the exhibition space, the negotiations uh with the University of Southampton, which, as I understand, are intended also to create uh a publicly available exhibition space. So just to make sure that that that's a lot of the rich data and messages that you're unveiling through this work is also feeding through into those other work streams.
Absolutely, councillor Radcliffe. I can confirm that most definitely that that is the case. Um. In the paper, we outline um how we're working internally as officers um through uh with our colleagues at Central Winchester Regeneration, um with our colleagues um in sustainability, with our colleagues in local planning as well, um to make sure that 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 information exchange is happening all the time throughout um this sort of key development um phase during the strategy and to ensure that we don't miss those opportunities. Um. And indeed, in the conversations that we had with the with um our strategic planning with our strategic planning colleagues, that um uh one of the things that were coming out of repurposing um of the High Street, etcetera, um and and the opportunity for flexible space was very much highlighted um as part of that. And so we will very much continue with those conversations across the organisation.
Uh, councillor Crumoyson?
Thank you, Chair. Um. So I've got, excuse me, I'm going to wrap up a couple of questions into one question, but really there two. Um. So we touched on that councillor Isaacs raised the question of sport and that sort of type of thing, whether that was part of the scope for the Arts Council. I guess my take on this uh strategy is it's not attempting to cover sports deeply. Um. That may, I'm assuming that's a another subject and would fit within another strategy. So uh the the question in relation to that is, can you just confirm that so that we're not looking at this thinking sports is a big gap? It's it's a deliberate decision, I guess. And then I think the second question, um, I I it the first way I phrased it in my, in what I wrote down was, what budget do you have? But I think there's a bigger question, which is, um, have you done an audit of the kind of resources and opportunities to tap into budgets in multiple different budgets in multiple different places which could effectively be levers for this strategy to grab hold of? And, you know, and if it was determined that this was important, spend some money through X, Y, Z budget and another another initiative through a different budget. So, you know, it could be that the cultural strategy doesn't have its own budget directly, but you can influence through your strategy spending in multiple different areas. So so the question there is, yeah. Have you done that audit of of those potential resources or is that part of the next next phase?
A little bit of both, to be honest, will be the easiest answer to that. We are certainly aware that to actually achieve anything here, it has to be done collaboratively, both internally and externally. And that's not just in terms of strategies, that's in terms of resource and budget as well. So we will continue all of those conversations with our colleagues across the authority, whether that's connection with sort of the movement strategy, whether that's connection with Central Winchester Regeneration, where there are budgets available to actually realise some of these things. And also it's how we work with our external partners as well, who have their own budgets too. And so there are opportunities where we can potentially realise some of the the sort of the priorities and the actions that will come out of this process that actual individual stakeholder organisations may well lead on as well.
Councillor Horrel.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair. And I reiterate my thanks for the presentation. Some very interesting information in here. A couple of points really, Chair. Firstly, just to be clear, the one great win information, if I recall, was done for the town, not for the district. And I think we should be clear about that, although I know the district at the time wanted to extend it, that that wasn't the case. So just need to be clearer about our definitions. And also, Chair, just picking up on the sports element in the list of cultural and creative organisations, we do have activities of sports clubs listed. And in my own home community, I see two down. And I'm sure one of those must be the lovely cricket club that we have that encourages a huge cross-section of people. But just to be clear about that, that divide that we've talked about this evening, sport and leisure. And the other thing I think to pick up on and just really how we make sure that we embrace this and and listening to the external speaker too. There are a lot of cultural and creative activities that go on in a very everyday way in our rural communities, film nights at the local village hall, the growth of pantomimes in the season, wonderful, wonderful shows put on by groups of individuals, amateur sort of actors who take up that role. And yet we don't necessarily embrace that, but we should perhaps find a way of reaching out to those who on a voluntary basis do things in those wider communities, don't necessarily have to find a big cinema or a big theatre, they happen spontaneously. And I think that's something to be embraced in this if we somehow can articulate that as we go forward. Thank you, Chair.
And yes, if I can just come back on what councillor Horrell's just said, I absolutely agree. And of course, within our district, we have a whole plethora of different groups and organisations and from different cultures that celebrate in a very different way to perhaps is, you know, our normal way of celebrating. And I think we also need to take account and recognise that too. And somehow in the strategy, pick up those elements as well, because for that community, it's very important. And it is something that, you know, as a district, we're a very welcoming district. We should celebrate that.
Thank you. We, in that last section, I think strayed more from the question to comment and observations or the not criticise it, but if there are other contributions people would like to make on the wider sphere, expressing their views, their comments on the paper, then please do so now. Councillor Horrell.
Thank you, Chair. Taking up the point about that broader group. The Muslim community, for example, established in our district is very well settled and embracing their cultures, their festivals is a good example of how we as an authority can play, I think, a greater supporting role. So Chair, my question therefore is in the cultural stakeholder group that is already met. Who is in that group? Which which people or organisations are represented there? I'm not sure that I'm clear as to who those individuals are. Thank you.
In terms of the stakeholder groups, we've at the minute covered that sort of around particular groupings. But the stakeholder group is not fully formed yet. We have had an initial meeting with a number of stakeholders. But we are wanting to grow and develop that stakeholder group. So, for example, we didn't have we invited, but we didn't have representation, say from health, for example. And equally, similarly, as you say, some wider, broader group representation needs to be brought on to that group. We've only had one meeting, but we will certainly be working to make sure that that group is comprehensive going forward.
Thank you.
Councillor Brock.
On the group, I note that it says members and officers, and the only member is councillor Thompson. And I understand we're able to engage in the strategy itself here, but we're not as members being consulted in a for our knowledge about culture as such. This is consultation on the strategy as opposed to consultation on culture. And I just wondered if we're having members who will be involved in those stakeholder groups. I understand you just said it's evolving, but.
Stakeholder groups will have involvement from parishes, but we haven't got specific at the moment, haven't got specific member representation. I guess one of the purposes of today was to sort of start that that discussion.
Councillor Brock.
Thank you, Chair. I just have one more question on the paper. So with the focus on carbon neutrality and the discussions in other groups about fifteen-minute communities, I haven't seen anything in here about any sort of aspirations yet that we'd like to achieve, that everybody has some sort of culture within a fifteen-minute walk. And I know that we've gone through and seen what businesses are around the place, but it's also made reference to a lot of those cultures being at home or private in the district. So I just wondered if there's any aspiration there that we're trying to achieve.
I guess a timely intro as well to the fact that I took a written question from councillor Wallace, who wasn't able to be here, which I'd left with Mr Gosler, and maybe if he can answer both things for us at this stage.
Very happy, happy to, Chair. So councillor Wallace's question, and I'll pick up councillor Brooks as well. Sections two point two of the report states that the cultural strategy further supports the council's enhanced focus on greener faster. However, the only reference I could find to support this statement is an insubstantial comment in section two point four. Quote, inspire people to celebrate and protect our green spaces and reduce their their carbon footprint. As the council has repeatedly stated, going greener faster must be at the heart of the council's activities. Therefore, please, can you elaborate on how the new cultural strategy intends to support the council's aim of going greener faster? And the response to that question is the development of this strategy has been driven collaboratively with stakeholders across the sector. And therefore, while sustainability is not mandated within the scoping paper, it is fully anticipated the strategy will support green growth within the cultural and creative sectors and will address how those currently operating in the sector address their transition to strengthen their sustainability credentials. The paper recognises the cultural strategy's connectivity and interdependency with the Carbon Neutrality Action Plan through the Green Economic Development Strategy. The formation of the consultation groups includes internal and state, internal and external stakeholders representing sustainability too. In addition to the measures outlined in the city council's carbon neutrality roadmap, there are many, many sector-specific examples of how sustainable practices are adopted across the sector. An example of this is Julius Bicycle. These approaches to sustainability within the cultural and creative sectors will be addressed as part of the work which will take place as outlined in Work Stream Two, when the principles of the strategy and its direction will be established in partnership with stakeholders. And so with particular reference to councillor Brooks' question around things like, for example, accessibility of culture within, say, a fifteen-minute circumference, that sort of thing that that we would expect the strategy to be addressing.
Right, I think it's time now to wrap up this item and move forward. I think, I mean, it's my biggest concern is the scope you face and the resource you've got to help deliver. And obviously, therefore, there's going to be an enormous need for collaboration and leverage, as has been mentioned. I, you know, I welcome reference to the sort of markers and information boards. I, you know, on any walk or visit to different places, I find them extremely helpful to just make the visit and the walk more interesting. And therefore, I welcome them not only in the southern parishes, but but throughout the district and certainly advocate collaboration with parish councils when you come or if you come to look at where these sort of things could be, you know, better, you know, more, you know, introduced more widely, because there's a great wealth of information in that. And thank you for the assurance that you are liaising as well as you can to provide the space for the provision of all these activities, be they for the purposes of knitting or leisure or sport or whatever. It's clearly going to be a very great demand for, you know, sort of provision of for spaces to come together for many of these activities rather than just being private, personal ones during Covid. So I wish you the best of luck with the implementation, taking this forward. And I know you're very keen to be as collaborative as possible, but, you know, I suppose, my, as I say, my primary thought is the need to pick up the cloth sufficiently to to take everything forward in some way or another, but without following any one particular line to the exclusion of others. And therefore, maybe have as a reference the boxes on page thirty-six, which provide residents feedback about being great to talk about these things, but let's see some of the, you know, the delivery or encourage people to feel that they are included, be they the small number of Hindus, you know, or the wider elements of the population. But that was just some of my thoughts coming from our discussion. So I'd like to move on. And thank you, members of TACT, and Mr Tate for your perseverance. And I hope you found the previous discussion interesting. So now I'd like to call upon councillor Ferguson to provide us the introduction to this page. And thank you, Andrew, and thank you councillor Thompson for speaking and assisting. At this stage, may I suggest councillor Ferguson, you introduce and then before we have, maybe before we have the presentation, I give Mr Tate an opportunity to make any general comments as to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you very much for giving the opportunity to introduce the draft Tenant Engagement and Communication Plan to you tonight. I'm delighted that we have Gillian Knight and Jeanette Palmer with us, as well as officers who are intimate with this this policy, particularly Mrs Palmer. Tenant engagement is fundamental for the council's housing survey. And we have a really strong track record of tenant engagement at Winchester City Council, something we're rightfully proud. We very much value the involvement of our tenants in helping us to develop and to shape our plans in terms of our delivery of all of our housing services, whether that's our new build programme or our services in relation to our current housing stock. We not only have TACT, Tenant and Council together, but we also have a range of other engagement methods and activities for a range of tenants. We know that our tenants value their involvement, and we are very thankful as council to all tenants who engage or are part of our engagement activity, whether that's online in response to a survey or more directly through focused groups, special interest groups, and particularly TACT. And our special thanks goes to our Chair, Vice Chair and Secretary of TACT, who are here tonight, Mr Cheif, Mr Light and Mrs Mernish, for all the time and commitment they have given to TACT and to their involvement with the city council. As I said, I've already said, we do have a strong track record in this area. But there are actually four reasons why it's appropriate that we're looking to create a new Tenant Engagement and Communication Plan at this stage. Firstly, we know that during the two years plus of the Covid pandemic, we weren't able to engage with our tenants in a way that we would like to. A much engagement was online, for many tenants that felt remote. We're very glad that we're now being able to enter into full engagement with tenants again, but we feel there are opportunities to improve. The second reason is the Social Housing White Paper, published in two thousand and twenty in response to the Granfield fire disaster, tower disaster, seeks to improve the way in which landlords engage with tenants ensuring that tenants' voice, tenants can have their voice heard and acted upon. The third reason is we have seen a slight drop-off in more active engagement amongst some of our tenant groups. We're aware that we are not engaging as well as we would like to with younger tenants, and this needs to be addressed. The fourth reason is we're keen to learn from best practice and to adapt our engagement activities to reflect the way in which tenants want to engage with us. As the paper makes clear, the draft plan before you tonight has very much been created in collaboration and consultation with our tenants through a range of activities. It is a draft plan, and we're very keen to hear the committee's comments and thoughts on it this evening. Thank you very much, Chair.
Mr Tate, would you like to move forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to address this committee. Whilst I welcome the paper, I do question why it has come here rather than to Cabinet Housing. I had expected all relevant housing matters to go directly to that committee. Yet this paper isn't even on the agenda for the twenty-first of March Cabinet Housing Committee. Getting tenant engagement Getting tenant engagement right is essential. And one of the lessons learned from Grenfell tragedy is that the housing management need to take very seriously what tenants are saying, and that starts by having an effective tenant engagement and communication policy. That was seen with the AWAB, ISHAC housing who clearly weren't listening to their tenants about repeated concerns over dampness. I'm a big supporter of TACT and they play a vital role in achieving excellent tenant engagement. However, a support report states there are many sections of the council's residents who don't for one reason get involved with TACT or the council. I have repeatedly argued that the council needs to vary the way it communicates and listens to its tenants. Using social media is important, but to move away from a very corporate approach, I think is required. Sadly, there are only 159 people following the council's tenant Facebook page. This seems to imply that a lot more work is required. The likes of Winchester Rants on Facebook often bring up council housing problems and generally the posts are very negative, although I don't believe that's a fair reflection of the service. But it demonstrates a way of communicating with residents. When the council last went through its housing options process some 12 or so years ago, and then some people here will remember that process, it went to TPAS, who were experts in tenancy engagement. Peter Marsh, who was one of the leads, is still a Winchester resident and has a housing consultancy business still based in Winchester. Interestingly, the tenants, after their preference of staying with the council, the ALMO, the Arms Length Management Organisation, was strongly favoured because it gave them more power and control over their housing. Having carefully read through the report, it's clear that the officer has an excellent understanding of the challenges of ensuring good engagement and the principle of listening better is an important point. I spend quite a lot of time myself engaging with council tenants for a variety of reasons. And you get a very different view of what people are thinking from that face-to-face contact. And I do somehow feel that the changes to the area housing offices and that standing back from tenants and that moving away from that close knowledge of a number of tenants perhaps has not proved as sensible as perhaps it seemed on paper.
Sorry, sorry, Chair, I'm not cutting Mr Tate off, but just to say that's the three minutes.
I think that's, I think that's actually my last sentence, so, but thank, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Councillor Ferguson, would you like to provide a short response to some of those?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr Tate. Both through interest in coming here today and speaking so passionately about the tenant engagement process. I think as we go through the draft report, Chair, and the draft plan, you can see that we're aware of many of these issues. And this plan is set to try and address some of those issues, particularly that greater face-to-face engagement. And as I said in my introduction, some of that was lost during the Covid pandemic for obviously legitimate reasons, but there is a need to do more of that. The issue around TPAS and that independent review, again in the draft report, and I'm sure Mrs Palmer will come on to this. And we are seeking to have an independent review of this draft strategy as well, so that we have that outward-looking piece. And again, we've engaged with tenants to ask them if that is what they would like and who would they like to do it. And we've had strong feedback from them, so it wasn't a decision we made, that's been done through and with our tenants. The issue of the sort of area managers, that is something we are currently seeking to address. And in fact, the neighbourhood services engagement officers, the two posts that were identified, which we've been trying actively to recruit for over the past year. I'm delighted to say that we have finally recruited one appropriate officer of the two. We aren't giving up on the second and they will be starting on the 15th of March. So that's getting back to having a neighbourhood service officer in our estates, which I think will help with that. The point about Facebook, again, our Facebook page 159, Winchester Rants, because of the nature of what people bring up, it's a bit like bad news on a newspaper headline, that often gets a lot of response. I know for officers it's quite discouraging at times because the people who are having a fantastic service, who tell us about the fantastic service they've had or the responsiveness around a repair, they don't go and rant, nobody rants, "Well done, it was fantastic", you know, nobody does that. But people, it's true, I assume, Mr Tate, you have recently made a, made a good, a good fantastic posture around about, I think, toilets was the one that you were talking about. But the point is that that often doesn't get that voice. But you are right, if our tenants are engaging in different ways, Facebook for the younger generation is like, you know, in the dark ages, we might need to be on TikTok for them, who knows? But it is a good point while made. And that listening better point, absolutely, that is core to this draft plan. We want to listen better, we want to hear, we need to give the opportunities to listen. And the key thing in the draft plan, again, which I'm sure will come out, is giving our tenants the opportunity to tell us and to make sure we're listening to them when they want to tell us in all appropriate settings, making sure we don't lose that. Thank you, Mr Tate.
Does anyone from TACT, if you're here, do you want to, hey, Kenny?
Yes, I agree with what some of the things that Mr Tate said. And I would like to bring more younger people to TACT and to have a conversation with them, tenants that are younger and also more people from different ethnic minorities and which we are lacking at this time. But I would like to see that happen in the near future. And also that the council can actually provide what is down on this consultation written down, that they can provide all the things that are on there. So hopefully we can go forward and work together in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So my, my take on that is that you have a concern that the draft, as expressed, doesn't actually provide full sufficient communication with those minority or younger groups or, you know, those that you feel aren't currently included. Okay, so maybe because it's going to go back to, and I think there is discussion, if you think there is a gap, then please do highlight it because I don't think that's intended from, from what I've looked at. The, you know, as the plan looks, is seeking to be much more inclusive and to pick up exactly those groups you've missed. But I'll, I'll ask councillor Ferguson to respond formally to that.
And thank you, Chair, and thank you for your comments, Chair of TACT as well. The plan definitely highlights those missed, missed groups. And it talks about how we need to specifically action our activity and target it at the, the underrepresented groups in, in the first place. And in fact, that came back from a discussion with TACT when we presented the draft plan to them. We were talking about that face-to-face engagement and their comments back to us were, you know, you don't need to keep engaging better with the people who are already engaged. Focus your activities and your resources, which I think is what the Chair of TACT is trying to highlight, making sure that, do we have the resources to everything? If we don't, focus our resources on those really hard-to-reach groups where we want that greater voice, that greater representation. I don't know whether Mrs Palmer would like to add anything.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson, and thank you, Chair of TACT. Yeah, it's a really good point, very good point, do we have the resources? And I think when I go through the report, it says that what's quite clear from the messages that we've got from the other sector providers is that this is something that isn't led, if you like, just by one team within the council. It's something that everybody buys into who works in the housing service. And it's understanding that in terms of having a process that people can use to feed back those views on the one hand, and that those who are having those conversations, having those face-to-face interactions, feel empowered that they've got a process to understand that, oh no, this is something that's important, that has to go back. They're making it easier, if you like, for the people, the tenants in the houses on the one side, to just have a conversation with somebody they may see on a fairly regular basis, but also making it easier for that member of staff to bring that back to service improvement teams, decision-makers of that approach. So in terms of the resources, it's taking that on board and saying that it may not just rest with the tenancy involvement team, that everybody has their role to play. And that is one of the ways in which hopefully we'll resource all those things that we've got now. But I think it is a good point, it's being able to release the resources to do that. So it's not underestimating the task. I think that's what Mr, Mr Light quite respectfully actually brought to attention. So yes, thank you for that, it's a good point.
Okay, well, thank you. So we can move on to maybe the presentation too, sort of the, your, your report. And particularly if you, if it strikes you that you draw our attention to the extra steps being taken to try to reach out to those who don't normally participate so far.
Thank you, Chair. And so, yes, so this is presented to members, as councillor Ferguson said, it's part of our partnership approach to building this plan. So we're here today to hear the views of councillors on the content of the plan as it stands at the moment. Because obviously this is in draft form. And this plan has been the product of a couple of years' work. And I think you've probably picked that up from the papers, there's been a lot that's gone into putting the plan together. There's been a lot of consultation activities along the way. And obviously they're quite varied in terms of face-to-face and surveys, both digital and, and hard copy as well. And there's been a lot of research with other sector providers, leaders within housing who understand good practice, have experience of what works and what doesn't work, especially when it comes to those underrepresented groups. Because as has been pointed out, reaching out to those younger households is quite key. But we're not alone in that, so that may be our experience here, but we're not by any means on our own with that. So some people I know have had some successes with that, I believe. So the main thrust really is dealing with that representation and also looking at satisfaction levels because we look at the satisfaction in terms of how tenants feel they are listened to. And there is some dissatisfaction there, so we have tried to drill down into that by having face-to-face discussions with tenants along the way. The representation is quite an interesting point through the years, for over 20 years now. We have done 10 satisfaction surveys. And over those years, the general trends haven't really changed a great deal. And what the results are is that if you, the satisfaction varies generally on the basis of the same things. And one of those will be whether you live in the city or whether you live in the rural area. If you do live in the city, which part of the city you live in? Because the areas in the city tend to have lower satisfaction levels than others. And of course, the other big one is age. So if you are younger, you are less likely to be satisfied than older households. So if you know that information and you know that those are where you're, if you want to find out how to improve your service, you need to be talking to those certain households. And then you look at the profile of those who are currently engaged and you can see the gap is the younger people. We're quite well represented on those spread between city and rural. We're quite well represented in the mix between general needs and sheltered. And we're quite well represented, certainly from face-to-face, in terms of those different districts. So the satisfied districts are engaging with the council and that's, that's, you know, we're quite, we're quite sound on those areas, the gap is the younger people. So that is going to be obviously one of our main features of the plan. So when we put the plan together, you can see in Appendix One, I'm not going to go through it, there's several pages of the work that we've done in terms of talking to people. So I hope the committee feel that we've been quite thorough in our attempt to get the views from across section of people. And the messages that came out, I'm going to, I will go through that as a result of that. Which is set out in section 4.3 of the report. So what tenants told us from when we've had conversations is, which is quite interesting really because we, we are looking at the performance measure, if you like, in terms of how satisfied people are with being listened to. And what we understand as officers and maybe elected members may be something completely different to what the households who are answering those surveys see as being listened to. So when we investigated that further and we had those conversations, to them, being listened to is those very face-to-face conversations which councillor Tate learned to when talking to the housing officers. It is those people they will talk to when they phone up with their repairs, those people who come to their house to deliver the service. If they tell them something about the service, that's the point at which how we deliver and how we act on that makes them feel listened to. So it's improving the way we respond to that part, that part of the customer journey, if you like, that we can then take feedback back, if you like, and then use that. I don't know if you mind indulging in a little bit of a story, I could take committee's time. But when we were learning all this and they're saying, you know, the message you're coming out is making it easy and it is through those golden nuggets, one presenter called of moments when you're talking to a customer and they give you a piece of feedback to do with how you improve your service. I had exactly that experience myself. So I experienced a service which I wasn't happy with and I took the time to phone customer services and explain why I wasn't happy. Customer service is brilliant, absolutely fantastic, gave me a solution that I was happy with. And then it transpired that the reason why we'd had this breakdown in customer experience was that I had missed a piece of crucial information. And it was buried somewhere on a different digital page, which I hadn't taken the time to read, I'll be honest. And then the customer service person said to me, you're, you're not the only one, we have lots of calls about this. To which I then said, well, just as a suggestion, you might want to feed back to your service improvement teams or your decision-makers or your managers that a way maybe for a win-win for both the customers and your organisation is if you could move that piece of information to a place where it could be seen. I said, and that way I get a better service and you get saved all these calls. And the person on the end of the phone said to me, that that's what we're here for. So my reaction to that, having just gone on conferences and hearing, I've just given you a golden nugget piece of feedback and you don't feel empowered to take that away and be able to improve the business, both for yourselves but also for the customers. So I took that back in terms of, and that's what they're telling us in terms of how we then need to respond as an organisation and provide a service, we need to find that way. So when somebody talks to a neighbourhood services officer and says, this piece of information is in the wrong place or a sign is not right, that that's fed back and we do those service improvements. Because when those households fill that survey in to say whether they feel listened to, that's the bit that hopefully will make a difference to see that improvement. So moving on from that story, and I don't thank you for that. Um, the sector leaders, the feedback that they gave us, um, was the same thing. It's about engaging with tenants every day. It's capture that information because it's so valuable. As my experience showed, the fact that it is the day job for every single team. And we're great in terms of formal structure and we're proud with our formal structure. We have these groups, we have TACT, which is involved in the governments and we are very proud of that. But it's for those people for whom that doesn't fit, how they want to share their views. That's what this plan is about. It's about finding an easy way for people who, who haven't got the time or for whatever reason that may be, and there'll be a whole range of them. The TACT won't be the place they want to be. Putting in a survey won't be the place they want to be. Maybe even reading Facebook may not be the place to be. So it's having that complete range. And I think we're missing that bit. I think somebody already said in terms of corporate, we're missing that informal bit at the moment to make that easy. That's what this plan is about. The other thing we need to improve on is feeding back. So it's that when people have told us how to improve, that they feel um, that it's been listened and they know how that's been taken forward. We do feedback, but we don't appear to do that in a way that is effective. That's what we're finding. So people say to us, oh, I never knew what happened about that. We think, well, we did go tell you and give you the information, but obviously not in a way that you've heard it. So that's something we need to look at. Being honest and transparent. Um, keep it simple and human language. And obviously the most important thing is about talking to all the tenants, not just those, um, on scrutiny and pounds. So the other thing that came out of the tenant conversation was the level of respect. Um, and that was quite strong in terms of, you know, they felt sometimes they weren't respected by who they talked to. And that again, isn't a Winchester thing. That is something that came out um, from the national work that the government did. It was in the White Paper, that importance of giving respect. And also the issue around ownership and accountability. And what came also out of the groups was the council, um, is seen as be able to respond very well when things are quite straightforward. But when things are complex, that's when they find it's more difficult. The customers feel that they don't get the answers or the feedback that they need. So it's looking at that and having the trained staff to be able to respond effectively. So in terms of various improvements, so this is our plans, and this is where we're interested in your comments in terms of whether you think we are going to fill that gap. Um, in section four point six, so it says, find that way of collecting information from frontline staff and find, making sure that's used. And then obviously feeding that back to the person who's told us. Doing regular customer care calls, that came out of Covid, um, that people's expectations were, um, increased because they felt contacted, uh, by the council when they had the care calls. The issue for other providers is that now those expectations have raised and those calls aren't continuing. Satisfaction has fallen for, for providers. So we're looking at doing, as I say, a customer care call, just saying, how are things? Um, how we target that and how we frame that, we have, we haven't sketched out exactly yet. Contact with all new tenants within 12 months, same thing. When new tenants come along, they get a lot of information. So then going back in 12 months and having a conversation and seeing how things are going and learning from that. Um, there will be some tenants that we don't talk to at all. Um, so, you know, all officers buying into making a couple of calls to tenants who we don't hear from, just to check how things are going for them. Text messaging survey, something that's quick, hopefully again, reaching those ungood generation. That's, um, something we want to look into. Coffee, cake and a chat, which came out of the tact conversation as a good way. Um, a programme of going around the district and going to where people already go. So not asking them to come to us, we will go to them. And focusing on groups where, um, of, of who we don't talk to at the moment, just have a conversation again. Um, and leaseholder and right by satisfaction surveys. So that programme around the district, again, it's got to be mapped out. Um, but that may be, I know we've talked about going on a Saturday to the local supermarket and just saying, are you a council tenant? How are things going? Um, so again, it's finding those, those routes. And we'll ask the tenants as they've asked us, um, suggestions on where to go. Um, so really, uh, hopefully those are the ideas which will help us address the gaps and raise satisfaction with people feeling they've been listened to better. So I shall leave it at that.
Thank you very much. Um, do you want to add anything to that? Jim, are you happy? I think councillor Ferguson has a comment on that and.
I, I, I think I'd rather take questions on, on the paper and do the afterwards. And if I may, Chair, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Tate asked one more question, which I, I didn't address and I, I like to make sure I haven't missed anything. He questioned whether, why this draft strategy wasn't at Cabinet Housing. And of course, that this is the scrutiny committee while things are in development. So because the strategy is currently in a development stage, it is only right that it's the Business and Housing Policy Committee, which is the subcommittee of the scrutiny committee, because it's at this point, the draft strategy is being scrutinised, which is why it's here, Chair. I apologise that I didn't cover that before Mr. Tate. But I, I would like us to do questions on this and then we can do the social housing paper, the presentation, I think we better.
So, so, um, councillor Ferguson, just to confirm, because, um, uh, there was that same sort of discussion over the housing strategy paper, which we agreed. Um, being a strategy paper was definitely for this committee. Um, and, and it will go in due course to, um, I think, um, the housing cabinet, we, we said next municipal year. So on that basis, now this one's called a plan rather than a strategy, but I agree with you that it's very much in the first instance for this committee. Are you saying that after TACT have looked at the final draft, that you, that it's still intended to take it back to housing cabinet as, uh, to, to sort of confirm it as a procedural paper? Or the underlying framework, uh, will be, um, a- agreed at that stage? Um, yeah, you know, can you just elaborate so that we're all clear as to whether it's only this committee now and the representation that they were able to make to this committee that will be heard? Whether there'll be another bite, um, at the cherry in due course?
Um, um, thank you, councillor Bronk. I'm actually going to defer to our strategic director with responsibility to ha- for housing, Mr. Hendy. Um, it does actually say in the paper that it will go from here for sign-off with our tenants, because it's a tenant engagement plan, which was the anticipation, but because it's in draft, it's why we're getting the scrutiny element. But Mr. Hendy may wish to comment more.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I mean, in the, in the report at four point eight, it sets out the next stage is on the, on the back of, um, this discussion this evening. We're also conscious, you've already discussed the housing strategy. Clearly, this would be an integral part of the housing strategy in relation to the council's response as a landlord and how it operates. So that could be picked up as part of the housing strategy in the future. But it's, if you wanted to, is within your remit for, to take this report separately at a future CABCOM housing, if you wanted to, that exists.
Um, um, thank you, Mr. Hendy. Um, my, my, my view is that, um, once we've, we've done it today and we've been through tactically, then feels appropriate to go to Cabinet Housing COM, then that's a decision that can be made. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And so, um, I think now if we move on to, uh, member questions for Jim Latton, Julian or councillor Ferguson, if you speak. Councillor Horrell.
Um, Chair, I have several. If I may, I'll ask a couple and then maybe prevail to ask some more in due course. Um. Chair, there's one thing that was said this evening that I think I fundamentally disagree with, and that was, um, that it's the responsibility of the whole housing team, um, uh, in terms of engagement. And it is absolutely. But it's actually a responsibility of the council. And in the last week, I've experienced something with a tenant where one silo of the council did not work with another part of the council, the housing team. And so I hope in this process, we can engage other departments right across our responsibility, where they engage in other ways with our tenants and can feed back, because that level of um, understanding, that level of knowledge is sort of falling between, um, two stalls, as it were, at the moment. So I would encourage wherever we can for this to be an effort across other departments where they interact with, with tenants. And I hope that that can be included. Um, and the other piece is broadening out. We talk a lot about tenants, but of course we have many different types of housing now and we're growing. We've got shared ownership, we have leaseholders. So we need to make sure that our conversations where appropriate engage with those other communities who might not be the classic, inverted commas, as if I say, may say, council tenant, but they are um, residents of our accommodation in other ways. And I think we need to reach out because many times there are interactions with those other communities, in particular, um, uh, developments. And that will be important. So a couple of points, Chair, to ask whether they could be included in this. One, reaching out to the broader council community, not just housing. And also making sure that we, are we able to embrace those other uh, residents who are, uh, linked to us in a very meaningful way. Thank you, Chair.
I think, I think these are, are picked up in, um, paragraph four point six, maybe under the first and the last bullet point. But are you able to provide a more detailed response, please?
Thank you, Chair. Um, yes, you're absolutely right, but it was one of the debates we all had, actually, in one of the conferences, what, what term do you use, tenants, residents? Because obviously, as you say, there's shared ownerships. The leaseholders are specifically highlighted within the plan. Um, but the actual plan itself is called. And so, yes, I mean, that's a, a discussion, um, that we could have, how we better highlight the fact that everyone is included in that. I'll have a look at it and take that back. Um, and I think I'd be interested outside of the meeting to hear the circumstances around the other, uh, engagement with the other council department, to understand what can be done there and how we incorporate that. Yes. And I also take the opportunity, because I failed to answer one of the points about the independent review. Is that all right, if I just inject? Um, so yes, we are having an independent review. We, we're, uh, talking to Housing Quality Network about that. But councillor Ferguson is absolutely right. We had a conversation with TACT in terms of how we wanted to approach that, because TACT were interested in a review themselves. Um, which might have been decided, and whether we wanted to do two separate pieces or whether it could all be together and who was involved in that and the different organisations that were available that could be asked, such as TIPAS. Um, but at the last TACT meeting, we did a survey as well with all involved tenants to get their views on that. That's exactly as councillor Ferguson said. Um, but we have agreed that we'll just do that one piece. Um, but obviously that will involve conversations with, with tenants, which will be independent from obviously the council, but they obviously the organisation will have that remit, but they will be looking at exactly, um, giving us a health check, if you like, in terms of our approach and where the gaps are. So I hope that answers councillor Tate's query on that. Mr. Tate, oh, sorry, my apologies. Sorry, showing my age. Sorry.
Before, oh, yes, councillor Ferguson.
Um, can, thank you, Chair. And, um, thank you, councillor Horrell, for your, for your comments. Um, I just wanted to add that absolutely, I mean, I, when I, when I think of, um, tenants, I think of them as residents within our accommodation. Um, but it, it is that difficulty around what word, because we don't mean all residents, but we do residents of our accommodation. And, and the point about the engagement and very much that, that point that, um, Mr. Palmer makes about those golden nuggets, you know, that, not just that engagement across the council, but also where there is learning that may influence what we're doing in the housing. Then if that's going through a different route, we wouldn't want that to be lost. Because it may be that they aren't talking to our housing office, they might be talking to someone else in a different department. But it has a ramification for housing. So I think that understanding that and how we incorporate that and how we make that real within the council is a, is, is a, is a good point. Um, thank you.
Before we return to councillor Horrell, your remaining questions. Um, councillor Brooke has a question or two.
Thank you, Chair. Apologies, I missed councillor Horrell's question, but coming on to what your answer was there, I'm assuming it was more about the wider council and I was going to bring in, um, anywhere I am in Demmeath, the white wings. You said it tends to be younger people who are generally happy in white wings. Um, there's a whole lot of older people there who are very unhappy. Um, and they tried to run a barbecue there last summer and only five of the residents came along, because as soon as Winter City Council is mentioned, they can't be bothered. Um. The reason for that is exactly, as you say, it doesn't matter how much effort you've made in the housing team. They were told there was going to be a polling station in their lounge. And it didn't matter how much they argued, that polling station was put in their lounge and it's completely ruined that relationship. Um, so it was just a, this is great, putting this together, but it really does need to be. But the treating them with respect piece absolutely needs to be across all of the services that the council provides to them. Otherwise, no matter how much effort, time you put into this, it's not going to work.
Uh, councillor Kamoyson, and then we can go back to councillor Horrell. Thank you.
Um, yeah, so thank you very much for the paper. I can tell from the paper and also the way you've talked about it, that you really get some of those key issues. Um, it resonates with me that, that, that one of the problems is getting the younger groupings, the younger demographics and the family demographics to, uh, engage. And there's a pretty obvious reason for that, which is, you know, y- younger people tend to be out and about and doing stuff much more than older people. And you're much less likely to find them at the home. So I, and I think you've identified that that's a problem and that I think you're starting to talk about sort of how do you go and meet them? That's the right thing to do is, is you've got to meet people where they are, whether it's in the pub or whatever. Um, I'm not sure you're going to get full support for a lot of sessions in the pub, but, but the principle of meeting people where they hang out is, is, and make it easy for them is, is resonates with me. Um, I think the problem of gathering the golden nuggets, um, that's common to all service organisations. It's not a council thing alone. Um, so it's common to the commercial world. They struggle with understanding the customer. Um, in commercial world, they prefer to as, as customer relationship management. And they always struggle with getting the full picture of everything that's going on and to pick up on the points that, um, councillor Horrell made around it's, it's the whole council is the service organisation. And if we, and, and it has a brand, and if, if stuff that's happening elsewhere damages the brand, it will affect your relationship, the housing team's relationship. So, so that makes sense to me. Uh, um, uh, and, and it is really hard sometimes to gather those golden nuggets. I mean, your story was fantastic. It's a great example of how sometimes the internal incentives can end up being counterproductive. So how do we overcome that? Um, so I've rambled on a bit here, um, but, but, um, I guess there's a question in relation to those two things. The question in relation to engaging with that, those younger demographics is, and, and I apologise if it's in here and I just haven't picked it out and retained it in my little brain. But what do you see as those top two priorities for how, for, for how you're going to start? Because, you know, when you're starting to do this thing, you have to expect that the first time you try and fail. Um, but if you learn from that and then come back with a different thing, that's great. So I'm just wondering, what are those top two priorities that, you know, you would go out with now and say, right, this is what we're going to have to do. And we're going to try that for a while, see how that goes. And if that fails, then we're going to try something different. Um, and then in relation to collecting the golden nuggets. And then in relation to collecting the golden nuggets and really understanding and acting on them, what key difficulties do you see doing that? And as you were talking, I was thinking, oh my God, GDPR, you know, how, how do, you know, as a councillor, if I hear something, how do I feed that back in about an individual person? Am I breaking privacy rules? Now, I think I know how to get around that, but, but what are those key difficulties?
Thank you, great questions. The, the top two priorities, I think this is probably from a very personal thing. So others might have a different view, so apologies if you do. But I think those systems to collect those face-to-face pieces of, of feedback are really critical. I think that's my first, my first priority. And then going to where people are. So finding those routes, having those days outside the local supermarket and just have, starting those conversations. So I think that they are the two pieces of areas of improvement, which I, I personally would like to focus on. In terms of the barriers for collecting that information, it's a matter of consent. So you, we're going to need to train those who are going to have those conversations to understand. We're going to have to have a system to, for them to bring it back and then obviously feedback to the customer. But if you have the consent of the individuals, so if they say something, so for instance, when I was on the phone to that person and said this, I'm, I'm not going to go away now and fill in a survey with that suggestion. So what was needed was for that person to say, well, that's, that's actually really useful. Do you mind me reporting that to whatever? Can I take your email address and maybe let you know what they say? Just as, and if you've got the consent of the individual to say, and people are clear in terms of how that information is going to be used in terms of a GDR, perhaps that should, we'll obviously look into the details of that. But that should protect that if that individual's giving you consent to take that away and then discuss how they want that feedback. I think it's going to be, how, what we would use is going to be, that I think is going to be one of the issues we won't understand until we started. How many, how many are we going to actually get back, you know, in terms? And it will probably start as a trickle and then may build. So that goes back to Chair Tax's point in terms of resourcing. You know, if it's 10, 10 bits of information a year, we can probably manage that. But if it starts becoming 10 a day, then that's a different kettle of fish. That's when we would have to look at it again in terms of resourcing. So I think the GDPR won't be too much. I think it will be the understanding of the people, having those conversations and training them. And then going back to people to make that work, to make it show as a difference for individuals. They've got to feel they were listened to. So taking that piece of information away is only part of the process. It's going back and saying, do you remember you told me about moving this piece of information? Well, we've changed it, it's now on the front page. So hopefully, we shouldn't see a problem again.
I think that's critical, is that closing the loop back. It's better to do that really well for some, or your initial thing, and then start scaling rather than trying to do it badly for lots.
Thank you. Councillor Horl, did you have another question?
Two, Chair. In two point six, you ably summarised the feedback that, for the meeting earlier in the year, where there were some suggestions in terms of engagement options. But I don't see those all filtering through. So my question is, have you decided to eliminate some of those for various reasons? And then my other question really, Chair. All of this is wonderful and to be embraced. But actually, tenant satisfaction comes from the service being tip-top, absolutely first class. And I know, and I don't think I'll be embarrassing our TACT representatives, but they've been saying to us for ages, things like our out-of-hours service is not up to scratch. You, you let us down, it doesn't work properly, it doesn't flow through. So in terms of the service delivery, we have to make sure that some of those elements that are crucial to the wellbeing and the view of tenants work as best we can. They're never going to be 100% accepted, but that they are absolutely first class and that we listen to what we're being told, so that those service delivery elements can be enhanced. Because that then flows through to other views about the council and activities. And we're forgiven sometimes if something doesn't quite work out or all the like, because they know that we've tried our very best. So a couple of points there, Chair, in terms of the engagement. And then secondly, to ensure that in all of this, we get the key principles of our service delivery at the, at the height of our game, so that our tenants are reassured that we're doing our very best on their behalf. Thank you.
Councillor Ferguson?
Thank you, Chair. I'll let Mrs Palmer answer the question around engagement, because I, I felt that we had incorporated those elements into the plan. But you, you know it more intimately than anybody, I would, I would suggest. Just around that first-class services and out-of-hours. We have already instigated a review of our out-of-hours service and we're looking at the options on, on that. And that is again, in response to listening to our tenants, listening to their feedback, taking that information and responding, so that's ongoing. And also just to comment, you know, within the HRE budget that was passed at full council last week, the key thing there, those growth options were about improving our service, making it even better for, for tenants in some specific areas. One area we highlighted there was being more proactive around issues around the health of homes. And that was the damp mould issue. So absolutely, we are committed to creating the very best service for our tenants, as they rightfully expect us to do. But we need to hear from them to help us improve. And that out-of-hours review is in direct response to listening to tenants and saying, we need to look at this. And in fact, the response to Christmas was key, key on, key on that. Mrs Palmer, do you want to address the, whether we've missed anything from our last TACT meeting?
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. Yes, councillor, which, which has been missed. The only thing that probably isn't really highlighted is the event, which was called the conference. Don't want to use the term conference, because when we surveyed tenants about that, that was a word that put people off. So we started calling it the event, didn't we? We haven't come up with a term yet. So I think we put something about specific events focused on, specific events. I'm constantly living on looking for it here, sorry. The, the other bits, the new homes is there. Talking to elected members is there, but it does say members. And when I read it myself today, I thought maybe we ought to put councillors. Because that, sorry. Look, is that the, the bit you think isn't clear?
Chair, if I may, conference or not, whatever the terminology, there was a loud voice from the tenants that a gathering of some note was hugely supported. So I think that is probably in need of some further emphasis. I, like Mrs Palmer, didn't really take out the elected representative councillor piece as loudly as I think we can be helpful to you, because we're all approached in our wards when we have issues that tenants need help with. And, you know, we can be a voice feeding information back and hopefully some of those nuggets. So I think some of the things in two point six maybe want, we need to make sure they're flowing through as effectively as possible, Chair. Thank you.
Just want to come back on that. Yes, so what I do is I change, at the moment it says members, but I would change that to, to councillors. And it's referred to as the one-off community event, is the way that's particular.
So perhaps if you just undertake to, to go through and provide a sort of a cross-reference.
Okay, yes, yeah, I can do that.
If Gillian has any thoughts. Simon reviews that, just to give us the assurance that, I think it's done sufficiently. I think that should just round that off. Thank you very much for doing that. Councillor Isaac, do you have a question?
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, it's very warm in here, isn't it? Yes, a quick question in relation to third-party contractors, particularly on the repairs team. Most common complaints that we've received is in the plumbing department. Have we got any provision or any plans in place for how we monitor that and improve if service falls below par? I've had about five complaints recently. The latest one being another 83, 93-year-old lady, actually. She was there for six weeks with a leaking newly fitted boiler. He would come out, five minutes, gone again, I'll be back in a week's time. And it was just, it's on the system that an engineer is attending, but he comes out for five minutes and disappears for another week. How can we, if residents are feeding this back in, which they were doing? And the only reason that they've come to me is because they've reached the end of the line, really, as to how far they can progress it. One of the tenants, even when they rang up and spoke to the, not the councillor, not the, not the council, but officer, but it was actually somebody from the company, in other words, this plumber's boss, said, oh yes, he's rubbish, he should have been sacked months ago. How can we, as a council, improve on poor service delivery in that instance or those instances? Because it's not a one-off, it's kind of a repetitive, and it seems to be plumbing that's hit the, the most.
Councillor Ferguson?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, councillor Isaac. I, I think this is a good point you're making. We're very much talking about our, our officers and our engagement. But obviously, we do know within our property maintenance, we do, we do have third-party providers. And I wonder if Mrs Knight, you, you want to say, because we do, we do monitor their work, but if the feedback isn't coming to us as a service, what, how do we, how do we address, address an issue like this? Thank you.
Yes, we do monitor contract performances. They will have certain standards that they have to meet. As councillor Ferguson said, our tenants are our eyes and ears. So we should be very receptive to any complaints that are brought to us through our, our, our housing hub. We, Andrew Palmer, who is the service lead for our property services, runs daily reports around performance through a robust IT system. And we also have our own housing management system, which will, did I say the wrong name? Did I? What did I say? Oh, sorry, I mean Kingston. Apologies. And he, and he will, he runs regular reports on a daily basis. So we should be taking that up with the contractors. And we have this year introduced a compensation policy, a very robust one for tenants. So there will be penalties around that, that sort of missed appointments and not turning back up. So I hope that helps a little.
And if I may, Chair, councillor Isaacs, I think if you have a specific case, the key, the key thing is to pass that up to Mrs Knight, so she can, she can look into it. I think that's really important.
Mrs Knight, would that be all right, if I send you the four cases recently? Just to see if they have actually been followed up, following the tenants' complaints? Because they've all ended up coming to me. It's been resolved, but I'd like to, I've never had any feedback afterwards as to what happened after that. So I'd really like to know if that was actually followed up with them.
That would be really helpful, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Isaacs. I think, I mean, it's useful for us to know that as part of a communication plan that we're talking about here, that that type of escalation, it does need to be addressed. But if we take the remainder of the discussion on those cases offline. But I, I, it was disappointing to, to read that tenants should be shown respect. And I think maybe, you know, when you read that country, it, it's, it's referred to as a headline as opposed to what one of the concerns is, and that it's not right. So, you know, that, that's, I think, part of the problem with, it's great to have it honestly there, but it's just the amount of context sometimes that's, that's needed. I think we've done, we've discussed a, a great deal by way of questions. Are there, were there any other sort of comment by way of debate that people just wanted to add that they've been saving? Or can we move on to the, the presentation on the housing white paper briefing on that? Okay, I'm, I'm happy that we can move on then to the housing white paper briefing, the supplementary paper that was distributed to, to come under this agenda item before we move swiftly or deal with the, the work programme as master agenda item.
Chair, can we just say, we've got a bit of a gremlin with the big screen. I can share it, and so it'll be on the public record and on the live stream. And it'll be on the screen in front of the chair, but I can't get it on the big screen. If it, if it helps at all, I mean, it was published with the papers, it's on page 81 of, of the packs. People perhaps follow along that way as well? Thank you. Just apologies for the members of the public at the back, because they will struggle to follow the slides through.
Thank you, Matthew. The, the presentation was really just notes for, sort of explaining a little bit more about the, the white paper and what I'm going to discuss today with just some sort of actual points under some of the work that we have, that we've already conducted. But I've been asked to brief on the, on the social housing white paper today. And the social housing white paper, or the Charter for Social Housing Residents, was published in November 2020. It covered seven key themes of importance to the everyday lives of residents. The white paper made a big splash in regulation, engagement, complaints, safety and antisocial behaviour. Headlines included a greater role for the regulator of social housing and the housing ombudsman, open publication of performance against standard metrics, the tenant satisfaction measures and publicity of landlord complaints. A slide two, please. The the social housing white paper followed the tragic tower block fire at Grenfell in 2017. And an in-depth government review of failings in a wide consultation with the social housing sector revealed five themes for further action. And these were published for further consultation in a new deal for social housing green paper. And they were ensuring homes are safe and decent, effective resolution of complaints, empowering residents and strengthening the regulator, tackling stigma and celebrating thriving communities, expanding supply and supporting homeownership. The long-delayed white paper was eventually published, as I mentioned, in 2020. And it set out wide-ranging compulsory changes to how social housing organisations operate. And the themes from the green paper have been redrafted and expanded into seven themes with further specific policies, measures and an enhanced role for the regulator for social housing in the housing ombudsman. The impact on the social, social housing sector cannot be underestimated. Not only are operational activities and performance measures under increased scrutiny by the regulator, there are also new requirements for resident engagement and complaints. There is a greater emphasis on safety, resident voice, performance monitoring and homeownership, backed by a risk-based inspection regime from the regulator of social housing. Overall, the seven themes in the social housing white paper are linked by one common thread, that the safety, wellbeing and voices of social housing registers residents is paramount. And it's down to landlords to demonstrate engagement and performance to their, to their residents. The three themes, should, oh, I'll read them out because they're not on the screen, are to be safe in your home, to know how your landlord is performing, to have your complaints dealt with promptly and fairly, to be treated with respect, backed by a strong customer regulator for tenants, to have your voice heard, not just listened to, but heard by your landlord, to have a good quality home and neighbourhood to live in, to be supported, to take your first steps to ownership. And theme one, to be safe in your own home. In the years since Grenfell Tower Fire, many of the building safety issues have already begun to be investigated and addressed. Theme one focuses more on rebuilding trust in building safety measures and ensuring residents feel safe and are, feel safe and are safe. Building and home safety is an explicit part of the redesigned customer regulation standards. There will be consistent There will be consistency in safety measures across both the private and social rented sectors, with mandatory installation of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms and an increase focused on electricity, electrical safety. Landlords will need to engage residents on safety issues. Two-way balanced engagement leads to trust, which is key to feeling safe. We are required to produce an action of residence engagement strategy to share safety information and allow safety concerns to be voiced. Theme number two, to know how your landlord is performing, which we, we've touched on. A key point of controversy in the green paper was the idea that landlords should gather standardised key performance indicators, KPI metrics, which would be presented publicly and in league tables. For now, there's no suggestion of league tables, just more accessible performance information, so KPIs are back on. As Jeanette, as, as Jeanette, Mrs Palmer mentioned, the regulator, got it right. The regulator developed a set of tenant satisfaction measures, TSMs, which landlords will have to gather. They will follow the themes of the white paper around properties being in good repair, building safety, engagement and neighbourhood management, including measures on antisocial behaviour. Theme number three, to have your complaints dealt with promptly and fairly. With the Housing Ombudsman's Complaint Handling Code having already been published and enforced since January twenty twenty-two, the focus of this chapter is on a strengthened working relationship between the ombudsman and the regulator. And the actions landlord must take to increase awareness of residents' right to complain. The long criticised demographic filter, where residents must go through a designated person or wait eight weeks before taking their complaints to the ombudsman, has been removed. The ombudsman's complaint handling code, code will help ensure consistency of complaint handling by landlords and also put greater emphasis on learning from complaints as a route to service improvement. Complaint handlings will be sped up and the ombudsman give powers to take action against landlords who are increasingly slow or unreasonably slow in handling complaints or are slow to provide information to the ombudsman for them to review escalated complaints. The regulator, the ombudsman and the government will lead a centralised awareness raising campaign of social, of social housing residents' right to complain and the roots, and the roots of objection, objection open to them. Landlords are also required to publish their complaints process, both on their websites and more widely, as well as raising awareness themselves of the complaints process. Theme four, to be treated with respect, backed by a strong consumer regulator for tenants. This, this theme is all about the new consumer standards and the return to inspections to accept compliance with them, alongside continuing co-regulation. The regulator has, the regulator has reviewed the existing customer regulations and the new consumer standards will align with the tenant satisfaction measures and the social housing regulation bill. Once this is approved by Parliament, it will give the regulator greater powers to address non-compliant landlords. I think that's due to happen fairly soon, actually. Landlords will be regulated to self-refer any breaches of the consumer standard to the regulator. The cap on fines, which the regulator can impose, will be removed. And performance improvement plans will be introduced for those failing landlords. Local authorities will also be held to greater accountability for their management of Al Mo's and TMOs. Theme five, to have your voice heard by your landlord. Involved tenants should be a key part of any landlord's governance and scrutiny arrangements. But beyond this, residents who don't want to attend formal meetings or join a panel should have their needs identified and their voices heard too. This theme discusses the need to tailor engagement opportunities to residents' needs and interests, encouraging and supporting greater involvement. Jeanette Spina has set out today. The regulator will review if landlords have sought out best practice in resident engagement and involvement and continually improve how they engage with residents. To upskill residents who would like to be more informed in, informed or involved in scrutiny and decision-making, a government-led learning and support programme will be made accessible to all residents of social housing. To ensure residents are treated with care and receive the correct support from landlords, the government will lead a working group to review professional training and development, including the need for mental health awareness and training for frontline staff. Theme number six, to have a good quality home and neighbourhood to live in. Much has changed since the decent home standards of two thousand and one. Energy efficiency and decarbonisation are now top of many agendas, as are access to green space for the benefit of wellbeing, encouraging community integration through good design and tackling community issues such as antisocial behaviour and domestic abuse. This theme considers what a good home should mean and how landlords should tackle neighbourhood issues. The decent home standard is, is currently under review to decide if it needs to be updated. The review will consider energy efficiency, decarbonisation, access to green spaces and access to communal space. Linking back to the tenant standard measures mentioned in theme two, the Pacific inclusion of satisfaction and antisocial behaviour handling has relevance here too, with landlords having to report how they are performing in this area and will be challenged on this as necessary by the regulator. The government will clarify the responsibilities of landlords and the police in directly tackling antisocial behaviour, so residents understand where to access support and what to expect in terms of a response, including greater clarity around the availability of community trigger or multi-agency ASB case review arrangements. The new regulated, regulated consumer standards will, will include requiring landlords to have a policy to tackle issues around domestic abuse. And finally, theme seven, to be supported to take your first steps to home ownership. The final theme focuses on increasing supply of affordable homes and in particular redesigning the shared ownership model. The new shared ownership model will reduce the minimum initial stake from twenty-five percent to ten percent, allowing owners to staircase in increments of one percent. Landlords will also now have to cover repairs for homeowners for the first ten years. I hope that's been a helpful trip through both papers. Um, and as I said at the beginning, you know, it's, it, it is a, a big challenge for the social housing sector. But we're ready to meet it. Thank you.
Thank you for that, it was greatly appreciated, rather than reading slides. We had an excellent overview, so important information linked to it, so thank you for that doing it that way. Um, are there any specific questions? We were asked, we'll ask sheet page ninety-one, if you have questions on what we've just been taken through. But being just a briefing, a sort of thing, and like, and if there are, you know, um, matters you're really confused by or need clarification on at this time. Otherwise, I'm sure, be happy to deal with them outside. Um, okay, councillor Horrell.
Um, Chair, we have an outstanding relationship with the police. Um, we had the benefit of that review at scrutiny recently. But obviously, there are links here to their support and, and some of the elements like county lines that they will be following. Will we need to do something more than we do today to ensure that we fulfil our duties here in this white paper? Thank you.
I think we're, we're fortunate in that also sitting within housing is the community safety team. It's very proactive in dealing with any of the issues very closely with us as a landlord. We've worked together very well for a long time. We've already um, have the availability of the community, the community trigger and tenants have accessed that. Um, we have the multi-agency group that deal with antisocial behaviour, street activity. So I think, I think we're fairly well placed, we can always do better. But I think we're fairly well placed in the council with the community safety team, the good relationships we have with the police.
Chancellor Cromwellson?
Thanks for that briefing, um, Mrs Knight. Um, there's a heck of a lot of content in there, most of it, which is probably going through most of my head. But um, I guess two questions there, I think. Well, one question really, which, which of the requirements that are in this white paper give you most cause for concern in terms of our ability, which is the city council's ability, to meet those standards? Um, and in terms of both designing a solution? And then secondly, resourcing implications to actually, you know, deliver on that, on that solution? Thank you.
I think as a landlord, you know, we perform, we perform very well in, in the business as usual type work. So in, in how we can, how our tenancy team operates and how we, how we manage our repairs, which is the most important element to, to our tenants. I think the big thing to tackle is a, is a culture change, which we've kind of touched on um, with other teams, accepting that everybody has a duty around engagement. Um, we're trying to introduce elements where we can make every contact count. And we've tried that in various guises. And so I think for us, it's making sure that everybody listens to tenants, we get that engagement piece right. We learn from where we make mistakes, we do, we, we don't always get things right. We're keen to make sure that we do get things right. It, as councillor Horrell mentioned, it's about including all our residents and not just focusing on our tenants. Um, you know, the frontline team is very busy. It is, it is continually um, at, at, at sort of top pace, trying to keep up together and everything. But we're very good at, at putting ourselves forward for best practice examples. We're part of the DAHA, and I'm hoping you're not going to ask me what that means. But the, the new domestic um, um, abuse legislation brought in, where it's a best practice that making sure, again, testing ourselves, challenging ourselves, that we're doing our best for those people that are, are seeking sanctuary. So I think, for me, managing so many different teams, it's getting that cohesion of us working together, working in partnership, understanding what somebody does here affects somebody there. And as I said, probably culture change around organisations and our own offices at times.
And the secondary part to that was the, the sort of resource implications, you know. Is it, where I'm headed with that is thinking, is this an additional burden? You know, over and above what we do already, which may well be exemplary or at least best in class. Are these introducing new burdens that actually will have resource implications? And that then leads, well, the question, I will take the question away then, was where does that resource come from? But just want your, your in-public opinion of that.
Yes, well, I think we've touched on the fact that, you know, the engagement team is a small team. Um, and so we will be looking at that because it is really important to prove to the regulator that we are talking to all of our tenants. So that will mean, as, as Jeanette has said, that is perhaps working different hours, different days, going to where those community events are. So there is, there is a possibility around that. We've recently um, increased our property services team, um, due to the building safety legislation that's come in. So we have increased that team by six point five officers. And that is really where, you know, our challenge is at the moment.
Chancellor Ferguson, sorry, I, you were handling that.
Um, thank you Chair. It was actually, I just wanted to follow up on councillor Horrell's question about whether some of the responsibilities within the social housing paper may involve our working with the police more, more, more closely. In fact, the Community Safety Partnership, Strategic Partnership met last week and we have the Police and Crime Commissioner representative with us. And they were congratulatory on, on the close working, the relationship that we have within that community safety um, partnership. So it's also interesting, there is additional legislation coming through. The Community Safety Partnership that we are going to have to adhere to in addition to this. So I think looking at that in the round is, is worthwhile um, doing because I can see some synergies between, between the, the two. Um, uh, Mrs Knight has reflected on the additional resources which councillor Cromwellson was referring to. It isn't just an engagement team, there is a lot in here that we need to do. And I think the way this presentation has been put together is to give members confidence that we're already on a lot of this stuff. We, you know, we're aware of the legislation coming through, but we're already proactively seeking to address it. And indeed, um, the community safety trigger, um, which is a, a method by which tenants know they can heighten an area of concern if they've had an issue with ASB. They're able to um, have a community safety trigger where they can review how that's been handled and the impact on loan. And actually, the council, unlike others perhaps, has been really proactive in promoting that as available to tenants. And that was something the Police and Crime Commissioners, a representative, um, complimented the city council on in saying, you've proactively made sure that your tenants are aware they have this means of redress to look at their issues. And that trigger is all about learning, how do we, what do we do, what, what could we have done better? Not just for that tenant who's had that experience, but learning for the future. So I hope the members can be reassured that in this presentation, that only doesn't set out the present, the um, the legislation and what's expected of us, but it very clearly says, this is how we're responding. More to do, but we're already on this. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Um, before moving on to the work programme, um, I realised I've made a few annotations, I just need to, for the realities, ensure that we address the requirements of the agenda item for item seven. Um, but what I wanted to make specific reference to on was, was page fifty-eight makes reference to the fact that we're just a city council's fortunate enough to have a tenant representative willing to give their time to be part of the national panel, um, uh, which is, you know, the, um, a national residence panel set up as a consequence of the Grenfell tragedy. Um, and that they're also part of the tenant involvement steering group. Uh, and I think, and I just want to endorse the fact that we are fortunate and I'm grateful for that individual putting in that time and effort. And I, I hope the committee agree the same. Um, and would also wish to extend their thanks to that individual for that service. Can I, do, do people agree? Do I, happy was my, maybe that, thanks. But thank you very much, please do add. Um, the, uh, page fifty-two, um, the recommendation was that the Business and Housing Policy Committee are asked to comment on the tenant engagement plan content. Um, and obviously during our questions, there was a lot of comment, I believe, but I didn't segregate the, the two lots of discussion. Um, I, I think, a, a lot of useful comment was also made on the, on the, um, on, on the programme. So I, I hope that that is, um, is, is, is agreed and, and that we can agree to the fact that we have commented quite fully on the tenant engagement plan. Um, and specifically, um, support the efforts made to, to seek to, to gain information from a, a wider base. Uh, and, um, I think that, that is particularly important. Um, and therefore endorse, um, endorse that effort. Um, so I, um, I, I think I've now closed off that. More formality, apologies for not making it clear at the right time. I think we can now move forward to the, the final item on tonight's business. Um, so, uh, thank you very much, members of TACT and Mr Tate for, for joining us and sitting through such a prolonged discussion. I hope you found it useful and that you're encouraged by the action that has been taken and comments made. Uh, thank you, Jeanette. Well, maybe Julian, is Sammy going to pick up comments on the website? Um, so the, the, the work plan is, um, on item eight. We've turned to our page ninety-three, sadly very, very blank for next municipal year. That doesn't mean that we don't have a lot of important activities. It's just that it's not been fed through into the, into the work plan phase. So I apologise to my successor because of course this is my last meeting. Um, I shall not be standing for reelection. Um, and I wish the, the committee chair next year, um, the best in this, in this role. And that, um, I, I hope that the, um, the housing and the, and the, and the business portfolio holders and, and key staff will provide us with, um, a, a, a work plan that reflects the importance and the necessary papers that need to come through so that we can identify better the, the problem of resource constraints. Because we want to have this task force, you know, the, established. But in order to know why that might be a problem or the recycling of the housing strategy, we need to know just what other key papers must be scheduled for, for this committee and, and for the workload on officers and everything else. So we try and ensure that that's populated for the next, the first meeting in the next municipal year. But to add to this, we clearly need to have added to it the reference to the housing strategy paper, which is to return. And also make reference to the feasibility and proposed timing for both the task and finish group, which I think is particularly important on, for HNOs. And it's been touched on at the end of a couple of meetings now as part of our cycle. And I think it's, it, it's time now to try to move forward, the consideration of at least some policy tweak to enable showers instead of baths in particular, in, you know, whether it's desirable to have them rather than to say it's not our policy to have shower. Unless very, very specific health reasons necessitate them. And I think that that was the answer that was given more than a year ago. And it is time we look more closely at that. So other than those comments, are there any other please for any particular papers for the, for the work plan or can we leave the, the next chair and the portfolio holders to, to populate it for scrutiny by the members of the, of the next committee, councillor Isaac.
I don't know whether this is appropriate now, but I've been banging on about it all year. But is there any way we could have it, Oxford in particular as a market town, on the working plan to discuss, I don't know if it's feasible or not, that they have residents that have links to work and families have priority over housing within that area? Because although we are over the acquired, required population, it is a market town. We don't have that. We've got people coming from all over the area and we are losing our workforce because they can't get accommodation. This is something I'm quite passionate about and I know it may not be feasible, but I'd really like us to investigate this, please.
Can you make any comments on whether that can be, can I, can I, or maybe Simon, can, can you respond?
Just be useful. Or we perhaps have a discussion outside the meeting. We're used to understand the sort of detail of that. Because clearly if it's around the allocation of affordable housing, that would be very difficult to do, if not unlawful. But if it's something else, then let's have a conversation about that.
Councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, councillor Chair. And just in response to councillor Isaac, I mean, obviously if it is, is around allocation of housing, that, that's difficult. But if it's a more general point, when we're looking at the housing strategy, about making sure that we have homes available for people to live in across the district, the housing strategy is very much looking at the, all of those elements of, of what we need to do to provide that in line, obviously with the local plan and everything else. So if it's at a broader level, that might be something we can pick up through the housing strategy and that member briefing that will come once we've got some of those priorities with allowing to voice concerns, particularly around that market town and that issue. But if it is on allocation, then that's a conversation to have with Mr Hendy or Julian Knight. And I don't think that's appropriate for this committee, but.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Ferguson. I, I agree as it's not a policy level matter, but at least it can be touched on within the housing strategy as a high-level policy.
If I'm, if I may, Chair, if you indulge me, also you mentioned the shower issue. And we are currently reviewing heating sources with tenants going forward in terms of carbon neutrality and energy saving etc. That's been done through attendance of four of a focus group around that area. And one of the issues within that which was raised is this issue of we currently have a policy that we don't put in showers. But if we're looking at energy efficiency, we're looking at cost reduction, then there's a new driver to look again about that policy. So it may be that that policy gets looked at through a slightly different route to influence the wider policy around major repairs. And it's certainly, is certainly on the agenda. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that assurance. That's perfect news. I, I hope that that shows that the asking for things into the work plan or changes have, have been heard. So that, that's great. I think then we can now therefore agree that we've reached the end of the meeting and thank you all for your participation. And our call to meeting closed. Good night.